As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Here.
Sierra Smara.
Here.
Todd Corain.
Here.
Duarkus Allen. Not here. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town planter Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Staff assistant Rachel Pressy.
Yeah.
Good evening. This is open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, November 15, 2022, now called to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended on June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 1-33747477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none. According to any of those members of the Planning Board, employees and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. Meeting business ground rules. I, the Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After he has made his remarks, the Chair will get out the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, Town Administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a rule call vote. First on the agenda is A and R, Todd Ostrokalowicz. If I screwed up your name, I'm sorry. 282 Southbridge Street. Is anyone here representing Todd Ostrokalowicz?
I don't know if you can hear me. This is Zach Glass from Existing Grade.
We can hear you, Zach.
Oh, perfect. Good evening again. For the record, this is Zach Glass from Existing Grade, representing the applicant Todd. Might have the same difficulties here. Regarding 282 Southbridge Street, I don't know if you remember, this plan was before you, a couple meetings ago, for site plan approval for the two commercial facilities that we're proposing on there, and this is just the A and R to formally create those lots. The existing lot, it's a tad over nine acres. I'm sure most of you are aware of that site. It's on the west side of Route 12, Southbridge Street, directly across where Hampton Street comes down. And the plan is to subdivide this into three conforming lots. Lots one and two are the ones where that proposed development is going to be going on, and then Lot Three is just the remaining lot. All the lots have the required area and frontage for the highway business zone, and that's pretty straightforward as it gets on that one on my end. So if anybody had any questions, they'll be free to answer them.
Do you have any questions, Sierra?
No questions.
Ron.
Todd, where's the balance of the nine acres going down the slope?
Zachary.
So Lots one and two, they take their frontage from Route 12, and then they go all the way back to where the property is for the railroad. And then the remaining Lot Three is everything to the south. There's kind of the power line easement that cuts through that site, and everything to the south of that is just going to be the remainder of Lot Three.
Thank you.
Any other? Anyone from the audience have any questions? Zach, I got a question. If you're dividing this lot into three, where it was one lot before, it kind of negates your two buildings on one lot.
I'm sorry?
We approved the two buildings on one lot because it was one lot. How you divided it into three, so that kind of negates the two buildings on one lot.
Well, it may have been a kind of a formality difference on my end. I think when we met, I discussed that the intent was to create a proposed lot separating those two buildings, so each of those buildings meet the zoning requirements for its own separate lot. The parking in the buildings would all meet the zoning setbacks as they work for that highway business zone. So the layout, as it was discussed, isn't changing. It's, again, just creating that lot line that's going to separate those two out. Unfortunately, that could create too much of a conflict with the plans that they were shown if we do create that second lot, or if it's just a quick amendment to the approved site plan that I could file, if that's what it would come down to.
Well, unfortunately, we can't rule on intent. And you may have had intent three weeks ago, which is now changed now, which obviously because you put it into three lots. So I don't know what the actual ruling here should be, Adam. Does he have to come back before the Board with an amended plan showing the two lots and this three subdivision?
If that's the case, I mean, the Board could still approve the A and R, and if he has to come back before he pulls building permits to meet the requirements, they could do a modification. That's acceptable. If it does meet the building requirements, as only requirements as presented a couple weeks ago, then we wouldn't have to make any changes. I can look at that with the Building Commissioner come that time.
Okay, so if we approve the three lots, subdivided this into three lots, and the two buildings would be based on what the Building Commission says, plus when he brings it back with an amended plan, correct?
If the amended plan is needed.
Each building's on its own lot, right?
No, there's two buildings on one lot. There's no buildings on the other two, correct, Zach?
I believe that, yes, the plan that was presented showed them as one, both of them sitting on what would be the combined Lot One and Two here. And then, again, the intent here is to create that subdivision between Lot One and Two. And then, again, if we have to do a modification, I have no problem filing that and getting that in, just, again, showing that it does meet all the zoning requirements.
Modification doesn't have to hold up an A and R.
Okay.
Modification doesn't have to hold up an A and R.
Todd, do you have any questions?
I do not.
We have a motion to approve the A and R as presented on the basis that he may have to provide an amended plan for the two buildings they want to put on Lot One.
Yeah, I'll ask. Are you going to check with Caleb to see first if this is...
This has nothing to do... That has... That's kind of like a separate subject.
It's a separate thing. If he needs to come back for modification before he pulls a building permit, we can address it at that time. It would probably be a minor modification. If it meets all the requirements, we can double check. We'll double check it. Then if it doesn't need to do modification, it won't need to. So we'll catch that before he does pull the building permit.
So I need a motion to approve the A and R.
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
To approve.
All those in favor, Todd?
Second.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor, Todd?
Yes.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Sierra? Myself, John Regan, and I. It is a vote. Your A and R has been approved. So make sure you check in with...
Okay, thank you very much.
Check in with Adam.
I'll get that clear.
Yes, please do.
Yep, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Second on our list tonight is, 7:00 P.M., Gregor Skalecki. I hope I said that correctly.
Yes.
Requesting a special permit under Section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a hammerhead lot at 654 Oxford Street South, Auburn, Mass. 501, MAP 68, Harpsburg 23.
Motion open.
We have a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, and I. It is a vote. I am assuming that you are Gregor?
Greg.
Greg? And why don't you come up to the table there, state your name and address for the record, and run us through what you plan on doing here, please?
Gregor Skalecki, 654 Oxford Street South, Auburn, Mass.
So this is... You created a hammerhead lot.
Yes.
And you can look at that plan right there. Spin it around. We can look at this one while you're looking at that one. So we had a concern from one of your butters that... Can I see that letter? It was from your butter, Nathan Lee. And I'll read the exact email. Do we make concern? This said request for zoning on the property brings a concern. The current wells and septic systems for the property surrounding it, we also have concerns for the wildlife and foliage that are currently on the property. We request that this division of the land be denied. Just want everybody to know that. You've got somebody that's against you over there in the neighborhood. So is there anybody on the board that has any questions regarding this?
Can you just... What roads, I'm just curious, are those... Is that near? Is it near, like Carriage Drive or Cedar Street?
It's Oxford Street South, so it's like halfway between Cedar and...
It's on the other side of Route 20.
Yeah. It's between the Houndipa and the Nissan dealer. Route 20, Nissan dealer and the Houndipa.
Right, right.
The street. I know what the street is. I was just wondering whereabouts it was.
Give them an idea, how far are you from the gravel pit? From Lanes?
It's about a half a mile from Route 20.
So from 20, so you're before the gravel pit then, right?
What gravel pit are you talking about?
Lanes.
Oh, Lanes is... Lanes is off Clough about...
Well, they own all that land down at the Scavon Head.
Oh.
They were...
Oh, they're before it. They're before Cedar.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, we're before Cedar.
Before Cedar.
Yeah, we're like halfway between Route 20 and Cedar, and that's it.
And it's all dry?
Yes.
Yes.
Has it been perked yet?
Yeah, I did the two perk test, and it's proof. And only just, I say the house, no must be exactly that's what is in the plan. Can be just a little bit far, you know, close to the tree. That means maybe 20 feet far from the street. Only this is...
You might move this 20 feet.
Yes, yes. But that's what the plan is. They show, you know, how close be. I have another plans from those. How can we look the house if that will be just far from the street, no move the septic? That's means the leach field. The first plan, they show the house can be just far from the street, and I no move the leach field.
You're going to leave the leach field where it is?
Yes, yes. But another plan is show if the house is close, and I move the leach field close, that means right now the leach field is 50 feet long the pipe. The new idea is put the back close to the septic and put the couple lay up the pipe and the shot.
So are you saying that you're going to leave the leach field where it's shown on the original plan and move the house back?
No, no, no.
Are you going to move everything back?
That means I move the leach field.
To where?
Close my house. That means close the septic.
Close to the new house?
No, no, no.
Closer to your old house?
Yes. This is the leach field, this is the septic. That means this is the septic. The leach field, I have the new plan, the leach field will be here. I show you...
Isn't this your property line?
This is the property line.
You can't put a septic system on the property.
No, 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 no. New septic proposal is here.
Yep.
This is the old septic. This is the septic from my existing house right now.
Okay.
And only the leach field. If I leave the house very high from the street, I no move the leach field. But if I leave the house close, you see, I move the leach field left side from the septic. You see, the leach field, the old leach field is here.
Yep.
This is the septic. The new idea, septic and move the leach field. Move the shed out and put the leach field here. That's I have the, you know, now I have the more area here. That is the proposal, you know, the septic here, leach field here, and only just, you know, leave the house, close the street. I need out the shed and put the leach field close the septic.
So I think one of the concerns is going to be from the Health Department, is how close these two leach fields are.
That was, I have the boat, the perk test.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. These two leach fields are too close together, and we won't even do it. Leach fields have to be so many feet apart. What they are, I don't know. You have to check with the Board of Health.
This, how much you say?
I don't know how many feet apart they have to be. That's something the Board of Health does, Todd, us.
Because when the light is...
And that's pretty close.
That's means very close look than the plan.
Yeah, but see, this is all downhill. This whole lot slopes toward the street.
Yeah, but this is... That means this, I will be say, is more like 100 feet.
I don't know if that's enough. That's something the Board of Health has to improve. So, I mean, I don't really have a problem with the hammerhead lot, and as far as foliage and wildlife, you're not touching anything in the back. It's too steep to bowl on, right? It's like this?
Yeah, but you could, I mean, if you want, you can move the house back.
That means, yes, that's... If I say the house is only the proposal, you know, when I move another 20 feet, it's no problem. That means I can leave the leach field like now. I say this is the 50-foot pipe, that means that will be here. I can only just lost the, you know, the property here, that means will be very no, between the open, you know, from the more area and the top.
No, I understand what you're saying. But like here, if you leave the house where it is, that's your old leach field for the existing house, correct? Right there by the shed?
Yes.
And then the new leach field is here.
Yes, here.
That's still really close. So with this being all downhill, I'm worried that Board of Health may say something that this leach field will run into this leach field. Do you have good perking ground?
That means the perk test is very good. That means...
What I'm saying is, if this is leaching into this, it's going to overwhelm this leach field. This leach field is not built to handle that house and this house. So if there's ever a breakout in this leach field, it's going to travel downhill to this leach field. And that means this leach field will not be able to handle that house and this house, and that leach field can't handle this house and that house. I think that's going to be a concern.
Yeah, but I know how that's look, you know, but this is, that is, you know, from the top to bottom, but also this is not the wide. That's only that's look, how the 50 feet, this is exactly, you know, the same 50 feet. I no move the put 50 feet. I can go, you know, the half, and it will be close this, and will be just, you know, the section. Like, that's what I want to do here. That means that will be just, no 50 feet long, like here. Here, look like the same is like here. That's, I will be modification this. I no want it, you know, the 50 feet long. But also this is very...
That doesn't matter how long this is or how long this is. This is uphill from this. I'm just giving you a fair warning. It's not my ruling, it's the Board of Health. They may say something about this leach field being too close to that leach field. That's all I'm telling you. I mean, we can approve the layout of the lot, and the special permit is because you're not in the circle.
Yes, yeah.
Up there, that's a special permit to bring it down here. You have more than enough frontage.
Yes, yeah.
Way more than our frontage. You have 168 feet, almost 169 feet in the front, which you only need 100, correct? For a lot, for a regular lot, right?
Yes, 50, that's 50 and 50 wide.
Oh, it's only 100 foot now over there?
I think it's 160 for a regular.
Yeah, that's...
For a regular? I thought it was less than that.
That's our C, I thought.
Yeah. But for a hammerhead, they only need 50.
50 and 50 wide, 50 from the scene.
One of the conditions used to be for the hammerhead, that the house had to be in the circle.
Right. That's kind of what's looking for a leach field.
That's what they're looking for, is a special permit to take it out there.
For the hammerhead and for the moving of the house down near the front.
Correct.
With the slope.
I'd rather have the house a little back, so I'm not right near the street.
Yeah, but look at the slope.
That means from another 23 feet, it's okay, but the problem is stay here, yeah.
And you go down South Oxford Street from Route 20. Are you on the right?
Yes.
Yeah, that is...
Yeah, so like, yeah, exactly.
500, you know, close 400 and 500 feet.
There's no elevations on this, but I can tell by the contour lines, the closer the contour line, the steeper the slope.
Yeah.
See, this is a slider down here, this side goes up like that, like a rocket.
Yeah, so we have that.
That's Granger Ledges.
Okay.
Yeah, the Granger Ledges, so at the top, that whole bend.
It makes sense to me that this gentleman and his wife wants to put the house here.
Well, that's actually still...
Can I have the picture?
Yes. 100, how far off this?
Right now is the 50, like they say, 50-plus is from the street, that's what the regulation is.
It could be 70-plus, is what he's saying.
I would be have 70 if I can move, you know, another 20 feet, you know, it's no problem.
I don't have a problem with you leaving it there and moving it back 20 feet. And I don't have a problem with the frontage. You have more than enough frontage. You have 168, almost 169 feet of frontage. So 158, 159 feet of frontage.
And also, this location, my house, that means everything look straight in the street. That is my house, neighborhood house, everything is in the line. And this is the proposal house.
Yeah, this is after the curve, and then it straightens out.
This is the street. Yeah, and this is my house. This is the proposal house. This is the my shed here. And that means the leach field will be here, the new leach field will be here. This is the neighborhood house, this is another house.
So how far back from where your proposed houses do you plan on clearing?
Clear the land.
From the street?
No, from here, back of the house.
Oh, that would be 300 feet, maybe 250.
How much are you...
You see?
How much you clearing, though?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, even a bit, but you know, just a bit.
You know, how many I will be just, I will be move clean everything. This is the tree. That is whole tree.
From the picture, your trees come all the way down right on top of the house.
No, no, no.
Almost.
This?
That might be 20 feet.
Yeah, but he can cut the trees.
Oh, no.
I need the cut tree from front.
I understand that. There's a method to my madness for the question. They have a gentleman that's worried about wildlife and trees and all that.
Exactly.
So if you're cutting minimum back, it may appease his concerns. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so Greg, at the back, your proposed house, the back of the house where the hill is, are you clearing any of those trees, or are you just leaving it?
No, I would be want, if I leave the house here, I no want to touch. That's, if I leave the house here, I no want to touch the tree and the top.
Okay.
I no want to touch.
That's what I was trying to get at.
I no want to touch, because it's nonsense, you know. That means clean the tree if this is...
You don't get anything out of it because it's all rock.
Exactly.
Well, not only that, but if you clear the trees and you stump it, you got nothing to hold the ground.
Yeah, because, yeah, yeah.
It's all going to be in your cellar. That's all that would happen, unless you rip wrap the slope. So I don't have a problem with that, but it just tells to go through the Board of Health and Conservation?
I'm not sure if I have to go to Conservation. If it comes to that at will, I'm not sure what the setbacks are, because definitely Board of Health, the septic and all stuff.
The septic systems, right? Okay, so we can approve the subdivision, this special permit, based on whether or not the Board of Health approves where your septic system is.
Contingent to that.
Contingent to that. So they may ask you to move it to the other side of the house, whatever. I don't know if there's rock down that deep, that far down at the bottom of the hill or not. I know the hill's all rock, right, so...
Yeah, but that's when they made the perk test, the 10 feet. I have the racks.
Is it all gravel?
Yeah, the gravel, and I have the... When they find the racks, that is the, they can leave, you know, they was the small acrobato, that's not what they be, and they move and everything. That means they, we find the one, when we did the second perk test, the left, the right side from the septic, because we did the tip.
The septic side.
Yes, and we just find the one, big racks, but they cannot move. But, you know, they was the smaller acrobato, that means. But, and this, when they did the perk test, this area, they no have problem, nothing.
So you probably saw water, did you?
Yeah, that's means...
Never saw any water?
Oh, no, no, nothing, nothing.
I didn't think so over there.
I no have the problem, you know, from the basement, any water, nothing, you know, that's means.
So does anybody on the board have any questions? Todd, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Ron?
No.
Sierra?
No.
There's somebody else online with questions.
Any questions from the audience or people attending the meeting online? One more time, is there anybody online that wants to ask a question regarding this matter on South Oxford Street? They're being done. They have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Todd?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. They have a motion to approve contingent on the Board of Health's approval for the septic systems?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Todd?
I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain?
We need four yeses.
We need four yeses nos. So are you still abstaining?
I'm abstaining because I couldn't follow the conversation with the plans on the table, even though I'm watching the screen. They couldn't zoom in, and I couldn't follow the discussion.
Do you have the small plan in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so if you look at the plan, the small plan in front of you, let me get mine out. You see the big circle in the back, the dotted circle? That's where the house is supposed to go under the rules and regulations of a hammerhead lot.
Right.
He doesn't wanna do that, he wants to put it down near the front of the property, fifty to seventy feet from the road. He has enough frontage, 'cause if you look at the, the side of the road there, he has, uh-
A hundred and fifty-eight?
A hundred and fifty-eight feet.
Yep.
And it's only fifty feet required for a hammerhead lot. So he has more than enough there. So, according to him, he's done the perk test, he did the perk test where he wants to put the leach field, which is directly south of the shed. There's two plans here, correct? One shows it, one doesn't. Yes, on the second plan, Todd, it shows where the, the new septic system is proposed. See the, the long lines, about fifty feet long, dark, at the bottom right of that lot?
No, I don't know if I have that one.
It's the second page.
When was that one sent out?
That was sent out, it's the second page of the, of the two pages.
It came in the packet.
Came in the packet, yep.
Came in the packet, okay.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, that's the proposed leach field, okay? So they've done the perk test, and it passed. Up by the shed, where it says shed right above that?
Yep.
That dark square is actually the other septic system for the house on the right. So if he wants to move the house back twenty feet, he's gonna relocate the old septic system further back, correct, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, my concern was how close these two septic systems are. So I said we could approve the, um, the hammerhead lot as presented, contingent upon the Board of Health approval of the location of, in the perk test of the, uh, septic, proposed septic systems.
Okay. Adam, does he, after we give us approval and assuming Board of Health signs off, does he have to come back to us when he looks, goes to build?
Nope.
No.
The building, or no?
Nope.
So he, he'll be within zoning?
Yes, yeah, they'll meet the, the requirements, the hammerhead. Uh, if you approve the house outside the, the usual circles.
According to what the Board of Health says.
It'll have to go to, looking at the map, it'll have to go to Conservation, the well runs right across the street, so he'll have to do at least a notice of intent. Um, Board of Health will have to sign off on septic well location, and then they'll have, um, building permits.
They gotta get a building permit.
They'll have to get a driveway access with DPW, so there's several more-
Steps to go.
Steps to go.
This is the first in the line. We approve the lot, he's gotta go to the Board of Health, he's gotta go to the Conservation Commission, he's gotta get a driveway opening from the DPW.
Okay, so the, the plan we're approving is the, the one that shows the house closer, not the, not the original one that came in the email? Is that what we're doing?
Well, this, well, the original one that came in the, the first page didn't show the house. The second page shows, it shows the house. That's where he wants to locate it, that, or twenty feet further toward the top of the page, which is no big deal. It just gives him more room in the lot on either side of the house. He's, he's well within the setback from the property lines required by town bylaw, and he's well within, well far enough back from the setback from the road. He's actually further back than the original house that's there on the right. By a little bit.
And he's not, uh, he's not clearing all the way back to the end of the property line?
No, it's not feasible, because it's like straight up and down. It's sort of, if you look at the contour lines on the-
Yep, yeah, yeah, the guy's trying to make sure that he wasn't clearing.
You see how close they are, I mean, we're fortunate, we have the full page in front of us, and the contour lines.
Oh, yeah, no, I can, I can see a couple there, yeah.
Yep.
Um, okay, I'll vote aye, based on this explanation.
Sierra?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
I saw John Reagan as an aye, it is a vote. So now you gotta go to Board of Health, Conservation, DPW.
Good luck.
Now, easy first step, but good luck. I hope you don't hit any rock when you go to the ground.
Get the A and R to go through, through with that, sorry.
Go on.
Just, that was just for the special permit, that was the A and R.
All right.
I make a motion that we approve the A and R plan as presented.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Todd?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
I myself, John Reagan, aye, it is a vote.
Now you're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thanks for explaining, I really appreciate it.
I'll get you the special permit decision, um, in a couple weeks. They'll need to come, they'll need to sign out, too.
If I would be living in California, I can build the house, you know, when the hill, but-
I know it is a California area.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
You'd have a, it was icy, I'd come down the driveway, you gotta slide all the way across the street.
Even right now, with the current house, the driveway is like this. Not fun.
Yeah, some of those on the right side, after you come down and take the first curve. Yeah, really up in there.
Hey, that's it. If you want, wait a minute, they'll sign, you can take your copies.
What a garbage you've had.
You only need one, that's the mile out.
Just fold this now. See? There you go. Got a pass you can send a mile out to.
This is regular pin, right?
Yeah.
The first would be just contact with the Health Department?
Sorry?
The first, I will be most contact with the Health Department to check my property, or how that's-
Yeah, you'll have to check the, um, location and stuff. The A and R and the special permit will have to go to the Registry of Needs. The special permit, it's gonna take a while for it's ready, the Board has to sign it, all three members. And it's a twenty-day appeal period, sorry, for the town clerk, so it's still always out for that's ready. That's gonna go to the Registry of Needs, once they're both recorded, then they can go forward with Board of Health and stuff.
So how will we know when it's ready?
I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'll send you a copy of the decision when it's ready, and then the clerk will let you know, and the twenty days are up. It's, it's a bit of a process for a special permit.
Oh, that's the most I ever said.
No, I just can't wait to tell you that.
One more, Sierra.
Okay.
Can you, will you sign, can you write the dates to, to, um, to Sierra, last one down?
Sure.
I'm gonna put the cap on, 'cause it's starting to dry up.
Okay, I have this one.
Yeah, this, this one, can you sign with the rest?
Oh, okay.
I think there's nine, and the mile out one you signed with, uh, this one.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I included it.
It was in there, exactly.
Okay.
So.
Do I add a date to all of our signatures, or is-
Yeah, just the top date.
Okay, oh.
Top of the page.
Oh, whoops, okay.
I have to write it, eh?
You don't have to, one date for the whole page. Move on to questions.
Sierra's younger, she could sign. You're gonna start the building now, before the-
Uh, no, no, no.
Next year?
Next year, I think, I will see, you know, the, how the market will be, yeah. You know, I am just crazy, because I, I wanna build the house from the shipping container house, the shipping container. That means I am a little bit crazy. That will be just, I wanna put the, uh, the high efficient house, that means I try to put the grass in the house, the top roof.
That's really cool.
That means the basement will be underground. And the shipping-
Over there?
Yes, and the shipping container, I wanna put on the top. Uh, there's something new, uh, that's something new, this area, but I wanted to see.
You're talking about the Conex boxes?
Yeah.
Yes. How many, just one?
No, 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 no.
Seven.
Minimum four or five.
And that will be the house?
Yes.
So you have to cut out the sides and put them together, oh my god.
Yeah, you cut the windows in, all the stuff they signed in.
Yeah, yeah, that's, they cut, they cut, you know, from the opening, from the windows, from the door, everything.
She's laughing, but I've seen somebody's done. Beautiful.
Yeah, they, they look cool, but I-
And you get a shipping container, like, for five grand, it's in decent shape, so-
Yeah, as I said, you have the roof, wall, and the, and the, and the floor. That means, I know it's not high, because I'm eight feet, but enough.
There's a gentleman I know down in, uh, North Attleboro. He needed storage in the back of his construction company, so he stacked them. Put stairs in between them, it's where all his stock is, it worked out beautiful. He lost them next to nothing, because it was a container.
They have swimming pool containers.
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
I want that.
It's a way to, a great way to upcycle those.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure, this is shipping container, the boxes. This is the garage from the regular country garage, shipping container, and the top is shipping container.
Yeah, all they do is actually resurface the wall.
What's on the other side? Oh, that's window.
Glass, glass is window. It's holding, is the-
Where's that house?
I just, only just find-
Found it online?
Yes, online.
He just Googles unusual.
That I just-
Well, I've seen them actually put a peat roof on, on one, they actually have storage up there on top of it.
I don't know if you know, but it's something new, but-
Looks like a regular house, you can't tell.
You got, one thing you gotta think about is selling it.
It's a little budget, I mean, in today's day and age, for the price of lumber and labor-
Now I just look for myself, you know, that's what it is.
I'm trying to, I've been trying to.
Yeah.
Even concrete's for the roof.
Yeah, looks very modern.
Yeah, it does, contemporary.
I know, but you know what is the price of swimming pool? Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, that's minimal, that's a-
The shipping container pool, twenty-five, not, forty feet long. They make the pool, that's the jacuzzi inside.
Yeah, I want one.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's not bad.
Oh, cheaper than most pools.
The gunite pool's gonna be forty-five or fifty.
It's only eight feet wide. Or you can put-
Long, forty feet wide.
There is the wide, they call the, uh, what they call? They have the name, the pool, that is, only just, like they call the Olympic pool, because it's the wide, the long, but it's not wide, yeah, that's, you see?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under other business, we have a discussion for whitetail run bond reduction. Um, this gentleman is requesting that we reduce the bond amount to nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And I have a letter here, email from, uh, Johanna Pakwin, the DPW director and town engineer, requesting nine things that aren't addressed on this. So we don't have to vote on this tonight, but we can just have a discussion. Personally, myself, I'll speak first, if nobody minds, I'm not comfortable reducing anything until the DPW or town engineer signs off on it. Because that's way too low.
What's the total bond now, Adam?
Total bond now?
I'm trying to open them.
Ninety-one?
Yeah, it doesn't say right here, it doesn't say on here. You just remove it. So, ninety-one thousand to cover this is, is pretty skinny, too.
To do whatever they're already saying.
Yeah, for what she wants, I mean, some of the, some of the bounds aren't in, some of the bounds are loose, um. They cleaned out the catch base, they dropped the debris right next to the catch base, and that needs to be cleaned up. Uh, the stop sign wasn't installed, the intersection with Brook Street as requested, required. Five of the twenty-four proposed street trees appear to be diseased or dead and need replacement. Five of the twelve granite bounds cannot be located in the field, they do not appear to have been installed. Those have to be installed, that's not cheap, it's gotta be done by Regional Ansuver. Uh, compaction of concrete on both street lights and bases is inadequate, as a result. You have air voids, and others we call them rat holes, uh, surrounding the aggregate. It can be seen on the house lot side of both bases. Those need to be replaced or repaired somehow with an approved, uh, repair method. Uh, the area between zero, Station Zero Plus Fifty and Two Plus Fifty on the left has not been stabilized, it has eroded. The erosion needs to be addressed, and all these areas stabilized, that's, uh, two hundred feet of, linear feet of, uh, land. The retaining walls constructed near Seven Plus Sixty do match, do not match the versalock retaining walls proposed. Developer needs to verify that these walls were constructed as designed by a structural engineer. In addition, the backroom material paste under the sidewalk, the top of the box culvert rip wrap is not suitable. That has to be removed. The drainage of a structure to the right of the sidewalk between Zero, Station Zero Plus Twenty-five and Two Plus Fifty was not constructed according to the approved plans. That's two hundred and twenty-five feet of pipe, that's not done right. It does not appear that the proposed subdrain was installed. In addition, the area will need to be regraded to allow the water to drain, and to create a sump, as indicated on the plan. Due to the steep drop-off adjacent to the sidewalk between Zero Plus Twenty-five and Two Plus Fifty, a fence is warranted, as indicated in the previously issued bond reduction letter generated from this office. It appears that the stormwater bases have been recently been maintained, however, resulting debris was, uh, left right on the side, right next to it, and the stop sign. So he's got quite a list here to do, and nineteen thousand's not gonna cover it, not even close. They gotta relay two hundred feet of pipe, that's probably forty thousand right there.
I'd say leave it the way it is, with no reduction.
I, I agree, but I would like to have, um, Todd, do you have anything to say regarding this?
Uh, John, I share your view that until DPW or the town engineer signs off on this, I'm not comfortable voting to reduce the bond.
I agree, we can vote on it, can't we?
You can vote on it, um, he's, I know he's spoken with Johanna, the, the developer, they're working on, it needs to be done. You can either vote on it, or you can just remove it from the next agenda, or wait until they get down to us.
We can vote to deny a bond reduction.
Do what?
We can vote to deny the bond reduction.
Yes. I, I, I feel more comfortable doing that than waiting till they get things discussed, that way we have, he's got a place to start, and she has a place to start, and to try to wind up, so. May I have a motion to deny the bond reduction?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Todd?
So an aye vote would be in favor, and a nay vote would be against?
Uh, a, a yea vote would be to not reduce the, um-
The bond.
The bond.
Okay, I'm voting not to reduce the bond.
Correct.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, aye, it is a vote. The motion or the requisition to, uh, reduce the bond has been denied. Decisions are one eighty, Oxford Street North, that's being signed. Minutes for ten twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, I didn't find any in my package. I didn't see them.
Oh, yeah.
If not, I can wait until the next meeting, I'll wait for the next meeting.
I prefer to wait till the next meeting, if that's okay.
Sure.
I'm sure they're okay, 'cause ninety-nine point nine 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 times they are out of a hundred. So, no offense, Rachel, but I haven't had time to read this.
It's okay.
I'd like to table this till the next meeting. There's no new business unseen, unperceived by me. Uh, any town plan or update, other than we still need an alternate here for, uh, planning board member?
Uh, we also need an alternate for CMRPC, um, our previous alternate, um, no longer works for the town. Um, I know who she is.
Who?
My daughter.
She doesn't work anymore?
Not here.
So, um, normally we have, normally in the past, there's been two planning board members that are delegates, the CMRPC, a selectman, and then, then an employee that lives in town. So if, you know, if you wanna be an alternate, great, um, Todd is not, one of the delegates now. Um, if we don't know if you wanna be an alternate, uh, which just attends a quarterly meeting, so it's four meetings a year. Um, they've been remote, they've been remote still?
Except for the annual meeting.
Except for the annual, so they've been remote or in person. Um, if number eligible wants to be an alternate, we can try to find somebody else.
Oh, you have to think about that, or-
If you're interested, you can talk to me about it, and we can discuss this also at the meeting.
Let's Google it really tight now. Anybody interested to think about it, we can bring it up in the next meeting, is that right?
I already thought about it.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Todd?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.